Just I'm in.
But Ian.
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, everybody. We're gonna start by doing the pledge. I'll have June.
Lord, do you need to choose?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three county commissioners meeting. On Zoom, we have Pat Conway, county attorney. We have Captain Man at Sheriff's Office. We have Jason Smith, long-term care. Looks like we have Becky Burns from the Needs Office, and I can't see that phone. I don't know who that is.
And then six, four, two, five, five, two, six.
Yeah, do you want to identify yourself on the on the phone with the? Just hit star, hit star nine. If you hit star nine, we can hear you. All right, well, anyway, in-house, we have June Gates in learning maintenance, and I have Alcee O'Toole, our H R director, Chuck Nicholson, finance, Leila, Commissioner Godu, Commissioner Coyle, and my child. And we'll start with the openings with the land records proposal. I think we have physical opening.
I move to authorize the register of deeds to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion been made and seconded in the discussion, not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
We should go to?
Yes.
Clock is opening.
Note for the record. Corrections and. And right.
Very good.
Number two, web posting, online access.
I move to authorize the register of deeds to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, this has been made and seconded in the discussion, not in motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will.
Wait.
It's so funny. We have so few actual openings that.
All right, gasoline and diesel fuel management system.
I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for network switches.
I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Ammunition from the sheriff's office.
I move to reward the proposal for ammunition to A A A police supply for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars as recommended by the high share.
Second motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Spectral analysis, saddleback and Warner Hill Towers.
I move to award the proposal for structural analysis to for saddleback and Warner Hill Towers to all point tech corporation for an amount not to exceed eight thousand, eight hundred dollars and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the high share.
Second motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Thanks, Senator.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah, where? So what's the plan after? This is just for the analysis. And so what's the plan going forward? What do we have budgeted? You know?
Sure, yep. So this is part of an existing project, but before they, I believe this one has already actually been awarded. However, before the teams can go out there and install the equipment on the tower, they need to make sure that it's structurally sound, making sure that whatever we put on there isn't going to cause a collapse or something like that. So this was kind of a something that came up after the fact that we need to kind of do in a hurry. Before we can put that equipment on the tower.
And then is this? May I say it? Is this part of the overall budget for the the tower project?
And this will be coming out of our contracted services line. It was a, I don't think we were anticipating this. However, we do have money budgeted for these kind of unexpected circumstances.
And you guys are good for the rest of your on that budget line?
Yes.
Okay, early questions? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Godu? Yes.
Yes. Onto consent agenda.
So with respect to the minutes, I moved to approve the March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three minutes and the March, April, all of the minutes, that's both public and non-public. I moved to approve the April sixth, twenty twenty-three public minutes, and I moved to approve the April sixth, twenty twenty-three department budget meeting minutes.
Second, the motion is made and seconded. Any discussion if not on the motion issue? Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I will, yes.
And I move to table the April sixth, twenty twenty-three non-public.
Second motion's been made and seconded, any discussion if not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, recruitment report. It's informational. It's on our packet. Does anyone? Have everybody listened to review it? Questions on that?
Wasn't much activity.
Yeah, good activity. I didn't see any any going backwards at all, which is sick. That's the second report where I've seen we haven't lost employees, which is great. So that's good. Okay, let's do the surplus equipment request pursuant to the New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight A.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, colon, eight, A, and declare an omni-cycle active passive pro from the Restorative Therapy Department of Long-Term Care Services surplus with the item to be disposed of.
Second motion's been made and seconded, any discussion if not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
What should I do? Yes, I will vote yes. Hey, well.
I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes a payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-five cents for the period ending April eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will vote yes. All right, reports. Everybody, reports.
Um, so over at the jail, the population is at one fifty-one, pretty steady in the mid one fifties. There is no COVID. The big change is now. There you're unmasking over at the jail. It's sort of consistent with what's happening over in long-term care services and what everybody's seen in hospitals. So. And the end of sort of the emergency period. We have, there is a new Senate bill, which again dealing with warrantless arrests at hospitals that. Superintendent Henry has is paying attention to and advocating against because of the impact that that will have at the jail. People are just going to get arrested. You know, people who come in for I E As or have, you know, basically need mental health help are combative. And then rather than continue to be treated at the hospital, they're being arrested without a warrant and being brought to the jail. And that could happen. That's the bill that would be proposed proposal. And the concern with that is that it just would increase the number of mental.
Who proposed that?
Uh, it's a Senate, Senator Gray is one of them on it. This bill came out twenty twenty-one. They tried to do this, and I got called by the ACLU Association of Counties last minute to go on testify. So they would have an understanding what happens at the end result. Those who met the health crisis, if they're able to do a warrantless arrest, and the only statute I know that you can do warrantless arrest on right now is domestic violence within twelve hours, right?
There's or there is some extenuating circumstances if there's like there are flight risk or there's an emergency. I mean, there are other.
Other, but mainly for that reason. And I let him know.
Misdealer, that is.
Yes, Senator Sherman, no one testified what the end result was. And the hospital administrator group stated that they wouldn't send anybody who's in mental health crisis would not be ones that are looking to get charges sent because they would never do that. I testified and said, I have two people that are under I E A status from the local hospital assault staff in mental health crisis sitting in the jail right now. So they're like, oh, uh, so my concern is somebody breaks a leg and they're just no mental health underlying issues and they assault somebody and they want to put warrantless arrest on them. So be it. My concern is that people are in mental health crisis, putting a warrantless arrest on them. So the police officers come and arrest them and take them, bring them to us. We're still in mental health crisis. We got two things going on. A, we can't do forceful medication. We don't have forceful restraints. And I'm probably going to turn back around with the correction officer and bring them right back to there anyways, who's going to deal with the mental health crisis. So just because they don't want to deal with them, they don't come to concrete and steel is what they're looking to get them out of their place, which we may take them right back to.
So we're shifting the burden to a facility that has less, you know, doesn't have as many resources to deal with severe, you know, really acute mental illness, even though we try really hard to do it. So anyway.
That'll be next Wednesday. I have a prior rundown testimony.
Um. Finance, Chuck, busy, busy, busy budget, wrapping up the negotiations. We also have a lot of changes with, there are some new changes to ARPA in terms of call federal standards. So. Reporting every, I mean, it's just finishing up the audit. It's just there's very, very busy over in finance. I think everybody's pretty aware of that. Over in long-term care, there's still, we're another week of no new cases of COVID. So that's always exciting. Again, they're on mass over residents will be on mass now, which is really a wonderful thing.
Two in a row, right?
Yeah.
The jail in?
Yeah.
The long-term care, that's pretty good.
Really good positivity level low and transmission risk and range moderate. So and we're getting into the survey window. The survey window opens up in May. Hopefully, we'll have that. The Polaris group coming in in early May for the mock survey, which is, I think, was really helpful last year and helped set us up for hopefully another great survey this year.
I'll finish?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Godu, I have nothing to report today. Okay, all right. So on mine, Allison did provide a long list review of how busy she's been to everybody. And then I'll let her chime in with certain talks about it. Jude's been very busy as well. And I want to thank actually Jude, Allison, and Chuck for negotiating. We we had our final meeting. Uh, last, last week, challenging, but I think things are going to be good. I think we're going to be good. So they're going to go back to their membership to vote on it. Well, more than likely, I think we'll have positive results. So. And then lastly, I Jude and I were talking about the solar piece more important, ever source is delaying some paperwork. And so I. I called Eversource and tried to get them to understand that we have, you know, solar, our solar is tied into ARPA money. It's time sensitive. They need to, they need to actually move really quickly. The interesting thing is, is in a very, they have a similar type situation. Eversource is dragging, dragging, dragging. And so I asked the town administrator how they moved upon, you know, from that. And he said, well, quite frankly, we just called the P U, P U C and threatened them, and. They got what they needed right away. Now, I'm not taking that tactic. And then I'm going to let them work it out because I did call Connecticut yesterday and said she's going to work on it. Let me know. So anyway, that's, that's my recruit. And I'll let you know how I'm going to go. But yeah, no. Um, okay, so let's go to final corrections, bid waiver request.
I move to approve the Honeywell proposal and big waiver request in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for purchase and installation of emergency buttons and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the superintendent.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Really, there's no other place to go for these patents. We have no choice.
We're tied into Honeywell. It's all Honeywell system.
And there's no, there's just no choice.
Yeah.
And.
I also did a whole complete system, which would be millions of dollars because it's all tied in.
And it's coming out of inmate funds, so it's not taxpayer dollars. And then the other thing is, and then frankly, this is like, this is important for our own, you know, protection for protection for the inmates, which is protection for us and liability. And I think it's, you know, what we want to do in terms of safety. So that's all.
If I had my way, I'd redo the whole jail with a different system, but after the building, it's a lot of money. So it's a long term down the road.
All right.
If the just the. Can only imagine what the cost of the whole.
No, I have no issue with the with the proposed. It was only the bid way that I was.
Fair enough.
No question.
Very good. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, prime care, medical.
Actually, I talked to, after talking with Kate Millais on, I would like to just have the commissioners' table this this week and bring it forward to the opioid abatement committee today to talk about it and see if if they're willing to do a recommendation back to the commissioners or not. And then that way, we're doing the structure that we're trying to do.
Yeah, let's table that.
Yeah, so I move to table the prime care medical additional mental health care services proposal.
Second motion's been made and seconded on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, finance office, Chuck Nixon, senior director for a bid waiver request on court.
I move to approve the uncorked proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, seventy-five dollars for an additional year of service and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of finance.
Second motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
So, um. Do we, I guess?
They're the only ones licensed to do support on the system. We don't have time to rebuild it for the runout period. I tried separately to negotiate with them from month to month or quarterly, and they were unmoving, even when they were presented with that they would, you know, basically be reducing assistance to maybe as many as a hundred households. The person just smiled and. And no, they weren't going to move off of a year renewal term.
Is there any utility in trying to get some attorneys involved instead of or we? We, because we have to have it for those.
We, yeah, or else we can't process and we won't have the information access for a single audit. So we'd be.
We don't have backup.
Otters and feel the test.
We can't.
The case information.
We don't have any like.
We were trying to arc, start archiving.
Yeah.
Uh, we had started the process, but I mean, there's thousands of cases to archive. So.
And what do we do next year?
We're.
Or we're done with the program?
Oh, basically, it's.
We'll give them.
They've extended it with this three hundred thousand dollars. Give them plenty of notice like now. There's not going to be a renewal. This is it. We're done. We'll give them that notice now. And well, in the meantime, we will archive everything so that if there is some sort of lapse or finishing work to be done by the otters for single audit, we'll have all like PDF files on each case. But it's, yeah, I'm not happy about this. But there's, there's not time to pivot to something else. And the only one's licensed to do work on that system, support the system. So.
Okay, early discussion. I mean. I think that's too bad. They don't want to have to work with us, number one.
It's horrible.
Number two, it's too bad that we have to get that data.
They're probably going to, I mean, I guess the only thing we can do is take away that when there are future programs and on court comes out with a new software program for some other application, then, you know.
Yeah.
Let us not, let us not forget.
Yeah, I guess hindsight twenty twenty, I would, if I knew it was going to be like this with uncork, I probably had been work with even some contracted help and develop our own access database instead and separately get Alexis Nexus description to do the ID stuff on the tenants and the landlords. That's hindsight, but phone light is on.
Okay, so.
Yeah, sorry, it's.
Sorry, we're, we're, we have the money left over and the.
We do this, they shortened this up. That's, that's what happened. They.
No, I know. But they, we have enough money to cover this cost. It just takes away.
Shorten the back end, like hired another hundred tenants that now we can't help. That was really probably probably being taken from the portion that we were supposed to elect as an administrative. That's where that's going to get you. But anyway.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm not happy about it.
Yeah.
On the most, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
I didn't want to vote yes, but I did.
I.
Given reach. I'm sure. Rock Talk Podcast launch discussion. There's a packet in there. I think Autumn in a letter saying that she's ready to get going on the podcast and she's requesting, and if you'd like to be the first to be interviewed for the podcast. Um, if we're interested to let her know, and then she can set it up. She said she can do two at a time. If we wanted to, just after, but that is an option. So anyway, any, anyone else talk about that?
No, okay.
Whatever. All right, open enrollment period designation.
Okay, I move to designate the open enrollment period for the plan year of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four as May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three through June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Herman heads, tell all your.
Allison, you go ahead. Get out your.
It's coming.
You know, your warning. You all set on that? Okay, and the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Uh, online open enrollment mandate.
I move to designate the completing the fiscal year twenty twenty-four open, online open enrollment as mandatory for all benefits eligible staff, ensuring that each employee acknowledges the premium rates for the benefits they've elected as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on that? Not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, health, dental, H S A, retire health, the buyer industry here in the plant.
I move to authorize, I mean, sorry, I move to approve the July first, twenty twenty-three, the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four benefits as outlined in the human resources memo dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by Gallagher Benefit Services and the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? This is a, we had a in length discussion with Gallagher last week, so. Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion two.
I move to approve a change in the waiting period for medical dental vision and life insurance from first of the month after thirty days to first of the month following date of hire and date of status change for those employees that convert to benefits eligible status as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on that?
Hopefully, this will help with hiring. I mean, that's the objective where people before, you know, you get hired on, you know, on January second, then you have to wait till March first to get to be eligible for benefits. And now it moves it back, you know, up to close to a month. So we're hopeful that this change that the commissioners, you know, I don't need to speak to on behalf of everyone, but that we thought that it would all help in the that hiring. And thank you to both you, Allison and David.
Thank you.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Voluntary benefits product administrators and plan providers.
I move to approve the July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four voluntary benefits as outlined in the human resources memo dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by Gallagher Benefit Services and the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discretion on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion two.
I move to approve a change in the waiting period for medical dental vision, life insurance and life insurance from the first of the month after thirty days to the first of the month following date of hire and date of status change for those employees that convert to benefits eligible status as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on that motion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes, I don't need to speak.
And I vote yes.
Thought I was coming in first. We.
For some of those. Stock loss renewal.
And move to approve the stock loss revised renewal option, remaining with H M as the carrier for a twelve-month period, July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, continuing with a hundred fifty thousand dollars deductible and changing to a policy basis of forty-eight twelve with a fifteen point nine percent increase in rate as recommended by Gallagher Benefit Consultants and the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on that? Not, Mr. Coyle?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
We got the benefit or everybody in, you know, all the department heads. I don't think there are too many people that stuck around for the Gallagher presentation, but we spent quite a bit of time going through all the options.
Good, good information.
Although everybody's not getting a lot of, there's not a lot of discussion right now. It happened in that portion of the meeting last week. So just to get people.
Yeah.
Let everybody know. But you can always go back and watch it in, in on the YouTube if you have any questions from last night.
Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget position changes.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget position being registered to the Department of Corrections and Long-Term Care Services as outlined in the Human Resources Memo dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget wage adjustments effective April twenty-third.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget position changes for the county attorney's office and long-term care services as outlined in the human resources memo dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget wage adjustments effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget wage adjustments for the county attorney's office, Department of Corrections, Long-Term Care Services, and Sheriff's Office as outlined in the Human Resources Memo dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, I'm going to go do it.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget additional position, finance.
I move to approve an additional part-time position for the finance office accounting analyst effective for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget additional position, long-term care approver.
I move to approve an additional full-time position for long-term care services, assistant wellness manager effective for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget as recommended by the senior director.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yeah.
I vote yes. Okay, long-term care services, big waiver request before we enter any, this is basically being changed to a discussion point. I will let commissioners know that I did talk to Chuck Nicholson and I. Asked him to look into to see if we could. Get a dishwasher replacement sooner than later after the budgets, when Jason Smith talked to us. I didn't realize that the equipment was seventeen years old, that it had pressure issues, that it had water leak issues. It's in very bad shape. And, you know, my understanding is it's. We were looking for ways to actually pay for this. And I had Chuck, I brought up the fact that maybe we could get some proper funds to do that. And anyway, so there is one new item, though, that's coming up. And I did talk to Jason Smith this morning that I didn't realize. So it could change the way we view things is, and I didn't realize this at the time, but it could be where we could actually purchase this with a certain percentage down, sort of like. You know, you don't require a full amount of money upfront. And Jason's going to look into that. I don't, Jason, do you get any additional information?
I, I did. I stepped away when we started the meeting. I received a call from Jim Hecker with one of the vendors. Fifty percent deposit is, is due upon ordering. For, for one of the vendors, I'm still waiting to hear back from the other vendor.
Okay, all right, because I, my, my thought process is like, I'm just using as an example, it's like twenty-five thousand down. You know, I would, then it could actually be a lot more doable, easier to be done that way. And then keep the remainder in the July's budget to purchase that. And I do have a concern, two, two things, twofold. Number one, we have the survey coming. That opens up in May. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, did we get dinged on that previously?
Uh, not, not during survey. However, on the morning when they walked in, the dishwasher was down and we had to order a part, but the part wasn't readily available. Jude's team had to, I believe, go to Massachusetts, make a special trip to pick it up, and then had to run around to try to get it installed. make a special trip to pick it up and then um, had to run around to try to get it installed before the state showed up that morning. We did have to convert to paper product for a short period of time, but it was just, you know, meal, meal biting for a few hours uh, from the evening to the morning until it got uh, fixed. But you know, that it's hard to find replacement products and I know Jude could speak more to that as well um, about the ongoing issues even before I came on board here.
Okay, and then uh, yeah, I'm just gonna wrap mine up and now let others sign into it. Um, my, my biggest concern is is that it breaks. And my understanding is, is the time to order, it's gonna take five to seven weeks. So if it breaks, we're gonna be without a dishwasher for five to seven weeks. Um, that to me is alarming. I I kind of equate it to my car needs brakes. Um, and I need to get it done, you know, seventeen year old equipment. That's probably past its life expectancy anyway. Probably get as much out of it as you can. I'm just nervous that we're gonna have problems, so I'm gonna open it up to the commissioners, whether they have problems. We should go to.
You mentioned that Chuck was looking at ARPA funds. Uh, do we have? Have you identified how we would pay for this, Chuck?
Yes, I put together the um, like a a quick summary or proposal as far as reclassifying are the eight hundred that we had for uh, Brian contracted attorneys just and just utilizing in my estimate, two hundred forty-four thousand. It sounds like we have to add in sixty-five hundred for the removal cost too. So that'd be technically two fifty-five hundred, that would still leave several hundred thousands of dollars still in that ARPA project that could be utilized. So it looks like it'll be utilized for uh, for outsourced prosecution on the sheriff's side, but there'd still be some hundreds of thousands even beyond that.
So we have the funds?
Yeah, it it would come from a reallocated source.
Okay, that's good. That was my first issue. Uh, my second issue is that I I wanna be sure that this gets bid out properly. Uh, I don't, I see no reason for a bid waiver. Uh, I I understand that it will delay installation. I think it's a reasonable risk. I I I don't like bid waivers when we don't have to. I and I think we need to make sure we're getting the right price. Um, and and the other issue that I just want, if we're gonna move forward with this, we probably should remove it from the next year's budget, because that was a line item in the budget. Is that still in there now or is that?
Well, I thought we'd be going this way, so what was in the budget was one third of a capital lease amount for it. So in what I did in the working progress one, I did temporarily take it out.
So it's it's out right now? Okay.
Temporarily.
Yeah, so I I I would like to uh, move forward with making a uh, getting this uh, bid out.
Bishop, do you have anything you want to add or?
Uh, well, I mean, I given how limited the um, options are, I'd be and that we're getting bids, I I generally I agree with you on the like, let's, let's get a, do a proper RFP. I'm kind of open to options, but what I'd like to see is if it's a, you know, depending on how long it takes, if the lead time is not gonna be till July first, maybe we want to use some out of ARPA for if there's a down payment amount and the rest budget in, you know, um, so we keep some of those, you know, reserves from ARPA. I I feel like we don't, I would like, I don't personally have a good handle on, I know Chuck you do. I'd like to see more like how where from our original ARPA budgeting, where we are and where there's room. And it sounds like there's definitely room. And I think from that contracted services line for um, for attorneys, there's definitely money there. Um, I know that especially with Bellamy's first going away, we'll keep the same staffing and it will get us through. We have that budgeted for the next year, but we probably won't need to utilize all of, you know, all of that money out of the county attorney's budget and, you know. So there's, I believe there's room to your point, Chuck. Um, but I think we should just slow down maybe for a week. Um, and so I don't want to delay, but slow down for a week, let's get a little more data and then um, and maybe and take it from there. You're inclined to do a, to RFP, put an RFP out.
I think we should. It's a long-term piece of equipment we're gonna be living with for hopefully another seventeen years. Uh, which would be nice.
And Commissioner, um, Leila does have the full RFP on file already. Um, I was just waiting for the much direction to take after this, after your, this conversation. So we are ready to go out to RFP um, after the meeting at some point when Leila has time to post it.
Yeah, I do think that um, no matter where you send the RFP, you're only gonna be getting a piece of whole barred equipment. So what you're actually bidding is just the install. Um, so we're gonna, we know we're gonna be living with this specific piece of equipment for seventeen years. The question is, who's gonna do the install for you and how much they're gonna market up, I think, just to be a little bit more specific.
Well, the RFP is ready to go. I I I'd be, I'm ready to say, okay, to get it, move, move it.
Is it fair to keep it only, like, can we just keep it open for a week? I mean, it's a shorter window. Would that satisfy you so that we can keep things moving, but make sure in that way the people that are really interested can?
It goes on public purchase, anyone that's that has um, registered themselves as being interested in selling that kind of equipment will get an email notice on it. And we already know we have some locals that are interested.
What's the normal RFP period?
For us, it depends. If it's a supply only, we might only go a week or so. If it's something hugely elaborate, we could give them a month if we're doing mandatory site visits. It all depends on this, this specific sub being RFP.
And then we can, if we got a background, if you put it forward today.
Got it. Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is not like an item that you're gonna pick up at Barron's appliance store. Specialized.
They're all gonna order the same piece of equipment.
That's number one. And two, I believe we've already actually looked at different vendors that actually would have this. The vendor that we were leaning towards was the lowest in price anyway. I don't, I wanna say at least. Agree? So you know, I get, I get the fact that you wanna price it out and everything, but if we've already kind of looked at the pricing and uh, and timing is critical. I just offer that as a, you know, uh, uh, maybe a justification if you want a big waiver, but whatever, whatever the commissioner's gonna do.
Jason, do you think that um, there a week is adequate time in order to get the RFP out to people and get responses?
Um, so what, I I allowed three weeks in the current RFP, um, which is kind of standard for more of a service equipment. Um, but um, I I can reduce it to a week and what we would do, of course, it will go out to um, public purchase, but I would also forward the RFP to the other uh, two vendors that quoted so that they could go for forward with the proper um, bid process. Um, so I know that they would be um, proactive in submitting that. Um, and it'll allow other opportunity for the other um, vendors um, in the area. Um, but I'm not, again, to answer your question, a week I think would suffice. Um, three weeks would probably delay the process a little bit longer, but it may open up to more um, vendors that may be interested. Um, the two quotes that we received were uh, recommended through our dining services program. Um, they have worked on similar projects with these two particular vendors and other long-term care service um, environments like us. So they were their uh, preferred vendors for installation for their dishwashers and their communities that they are partnered.
I'm good with a week.
And then we can come back. If it goes, starts today, then it would close on Wednesday and then we could potentially Wednesday afternoon evaluate and then have a recommendation for Thursday. Does that make sense? And then we might also get more data on how much, what needs to be upfront versus if there's, you know, lead time, things like that. And that would give us an ability at the same time to make an educated decision about use of funds. Does that make sense to everybody?
So.
Sorry.
Um, RFPs usually close on a Monday.
Okay.
Um, we could push it off until Tuesday. Wednesday would be really pushing it because it's usually five P M. And then of course, the meeting is, you know, that the next morning at early, early, so it would be really difficult. Um, it could potentially be really difficult. So we could push it off till Tuesday at five or or even Wednesday at noon.
Yeah, that'd be great. I I mean, once it, if if we, if we can, if it's not too much burden on everybody, make it Wednesday at noon, that would be my, so that would be my recommendation, but I don't know.
But the sooner the better, I mean, I'm just nervous of anything crashing.
So if we would put it out today, today, and then the time period would close Wednesday noon, so we could discuss it next Thursday. I'm good with that.
Leila, I will have Elaine work with you to get this um, addressed today.
Perfect.
And Jason just.
After the meeting.
Yes, Commissioner.
So the, what's the timeframe when we, when it gets ordered along till it gets delivered?
Depending on the vendor, one of the vendors requires a fifty percent deposit um, upon um, signing of the um, quote. Um, and then it, from there, it will take anywhere from one vendor, they said five to seven weeks. I'm still waiting to hear back from the other vendor. Um, so from there, uh, then a forty percent deposit, um, once it's delivered, um, will be needed and then once um, totally assembled and working, the final ten percent.
Okay, so if it's up to bid, it's end Wednesday that would give us next Thursday to talk about the finance, how we're gonna finance decisions. Okay, does that make sense to everybody?
So do we want to do the opening and the award next week? Yes, please.
Right.
And Leila, thank you. I mean, it adds added burden to you to get this posted and out on public purchase, so I'm like, unsafe, unsafe here, word this week, thank you.
Mr. Coyle, you wanna form a motion?
So um, I guess we'll just do.
You may have to read words.
Yes, so um, well, I don't, I move to, I don't think we have to actually make a motion to put out the RFP.
No.
We should, so I think it just. We don't have to make any motions. Um, well, just, I'm just gonna move, I guess I will move to table motions one and two on the long-term care services because and we'll tape on to next week and perhaps amend the motions. Okay?
I need a second, second, motion's been made, table, motions one and two and seconded, um, motion, Mr. Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
All right, um, I I have a question that we don't need to make a motion to send the RFP. We always make motions for RFPs, don't we?
Not to post them. We need to put a motion to open, so when the RFP comes back.
I will do that, okay.
Yeah, and then we're gonna open and close on this, or award, open an award on the same day.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Jason, cross off thing is nothing blows up.
I I I've been keeping my fingers crossed for two years.
Okay. All right, onto adult medical daycare, status updated.
You have the juju, the dishwasher juju, Jason. Add that to your resume.
Anyone wanna discuss the adult medical daycare?
I I think we should have a discussion. I mean, one, I would move if you guys, I don't know if you guys um, looked at this, but one of, I think it's Silver Thorn is looking, they have a um, washing or dry washing machine or dryer that is on its last leg that they need replaced to the tune of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, I wonder if we could give them, uh, we could make a motion to award them that money. Um, Jason and I have a conversation and it's like, having, just moving forward, I mean, we're gonna come in like fifty percent of budget for these um, these, the adult medical daycare. And I think we need to, they're a dying breed and, you know, we need to try to help support them. And Jason talked about trying to work with them individually to do some marketing and um, to help sort of keep that, sustain them and also help our community, so.
Is that the only one, there's three different adult daycare, is that the only one that needs, has a need like that?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner. Um, you know, they're, they're all struggling for staffing, which um, dictates how many clients they can have um, on their program every day. Some are having transportation issues, um, just like all healthcare organizations, so that they're just feeling the the same um, concerns as as we do here. Um, but as far as equipment needs, yes, that is the only um, the only requested item. Uh, I have reached out to Joe Woodbury from um, uh, senior class uh, through uh, two phone messages and a couple of emails and haven't heard anything back. They're the ones that um, were recently purchased. Uh, Savita Health purchased them and um, I I have, um, it's interesting, I've seen a decline in claims coming through, so I I I worry about their um, longevity and supporting the senior population. Um, however, they are very proactive, the two, about working with us to see if.
Technology. Everyone's raising.
Yeah.
So for us here.
Hey.
Yeah, that's a local thing. I, that's, I still. Jason, no one can hear you.
Support them.
Everything froze, so you'll have to um, repeat what you said in a, in a quicker summary.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, yeah, we're, we're open to working with them and they're very um, uh, they want to work with us uh, to uh, uh, partner more and to get the word out there that Rockingham County uh, supports uh, seniors through Adult Day Programming uh, financial support.
Okay. Chuck, if, if I can, we've also in the past, it looks like that um, that these organizations aren't asking for drawdowns, you know, from submissions, you know, monthly submissions. We have released some budget, but not unexpended funds and allocate them out to the providers that we have so that they can utilize it towards
Right.
supporting their own. Okay, so we have done that before, like done a, a quick analysis and so if like someone looks like they're not gonna, you know, they haven't spent you know, say twenty thousand of the amount remaining, submitting like two thousand a month, then you know, maybe ten thousand at least now, and the board would approve that release that's not based upon a monthly, you know, submission.
Okay.
So we have done that in the past.
Dive a little bit more deeper, we'll put it on as a motion next week.
Yeah, and maybe do larger to Chuck's point. And I remember being parts of, you know, making those motions to giving just support and luckily in the early days, we would have those types of earlier days, probably a number of those motions just to keep them, give them assistance to keep them sustainable.
Yeah, and and that was mentioned, um, how supportive um, the commissioners were with that, with uh, supplies for P P E, uh, additional um, staffing needs and supporting staffing, um, so they would come in to work. Um, so the, those resources really came in um, favorable to these organizations. They were very complimentary.
Boxes and boxes.
Some stuff. Okay, so we'll uh, we'll, we'll take that up next week. Uh, now let's go on to the Golden Tides Dental updated.
I move to approve the updated amendment to the Golden Tides Dental Service Order as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Mr. Godu?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Do the I N two L interactive technology system.
This is so cool. I move to approve the purchase of two I N two L senior engagement technology systems for a amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand two hundred and eight dollars using the nursing home special fund efforts as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
I do, um, just with respect to the, I'm not that familiar with the nursing home special fund efforts. Can, or Chuck, sorry, I.
I, I might have more history than Jason.
I just wanna understand.
So, so, so basically, many individuals in the past have donated, whether it's from residents that they left in their wills or from family members or this general fundraising efforts. Um, for example, when we used to host the um, fireworks here and would charge for um, for concessions, stuff like that, the efforts fund would actually spend money to buy the supplies and then they get to take in all the the proceeds. And so obviously there was a net positive. I used to be a big fundraiser, but what's happened is over many, many years of having this, we haven't spent that much out of the special revenue funds. And so we have over a hundred thousand that's actually in that. And so we have over a hundred thousand that's actually in that fund. That could be utilized towards things to benefit the residents, it's actually broken down into different categories, social club, Christmas club, Thanksgiving baskets, we always do those. Uh, that was a separate fundraiser, um, obviously efforts is a big thing and also. Um, there's a separate piece that's residents as well, um, that's separate from the fiduciary fund, that's residents' fund. And so, you know, basically, there's all these monies left there and they're to be spent for the benefit of the residents in different areas. And uh, and so I'm happy to see that, that Jason's taking a shift to utilize some of that.
And it's actually an acronym for employee funds for our residents to share. It started off with employees in the eighties, I think they bought the original Azure Tubs because there wasn't enough money in the county budget. And the employees did these fundraisers and they bought the first Azure Tubs. Yeah, it is cool.
That is cool. There was an efforts committee, cause I was on it for a couple of years and I was here, and then we did TVs in their rooms one time too. 买了电视机，对居民房也买了
What I find is so great about this, I mean, you can see some of that, it's just like, it is so much, there's so much engagement and stimulation with the, these devices. I don't know if you call it a device or this technology and so, and, and also like. I think that it's not just like, it's the social aspect of it too, which is in connectivity with um staff and residents and so. This seems like the perfect use of this type of these funds.
And, and certainly too, from the fiscal perspective, it's not general fund monies, it's not taxpayer monies.
Yeah.
It is going back towards the residents with what was the original purpose of the donations.
Good, Commissioner, I've met with the resident council and the resident council um is very excited to be using these funds to purchase these um. You know, as, as devices, if you wanna call them that, engagement um by design, um playful by design, there's just so much um research behind these. Um, uh, these tools that staff and residents uh can engage and create meaningful experiences, so um, thank you for allowing this.
Thank you.
All right, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Goddard? Yes. I vote yes. Uh, let's go on to the over now, magic table.
I move to approve the purchase of a over top top roll console for a amount not to exceed twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Using the nursing home special funds efforts as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, uh, Tovitz Hall Magic Table, sounds like a seventies sound, but. I reminds wanna know what that is, I like magic.
Oh, man.
Magic table.
Yeah, they're all the, part of the same, like.
Jason, do you know what that is?
Yes, yes.
So cool.
Jude, Jude's explaining it, it's, it's very interactive, it is fantastic with um our residents in our memory care neighborhood. Um, to, we took some pictures um that I think was in the packet that was submitted to all of you. Um, and it really helps demonstrate um sense of community, but also you're taking application of movement and light therapy. And residents are interacting with each other, but also with the system. And it's all about meaningful play and um creating experiences for residents to, for functionality. Um, there's music that's playing, so it, it, it triggers them a response. Um, when there's noises and lights and movement and it really helps with um resident engagement and also. Uh, lowering um anxiety and increased behaviors, uh, so it, it's going to be a very unique um device and one of the first in New Hampshire. That residents will have this experience and so I'm really excited to be um, to have the opportunity to, to have this in our community, it will really be a great. Um, addition to our memory care programming.
Very good.
Really.
Right.
And it's there, the one other thing is just how difficult the memory care, you know, that's one area where engagement, it can be so challenging and it's just. It's like short money to have.
On the motion, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Goddard? Yes. I vote yes. Let us know when that comes in, like to see how that operates in real, real life.
Absolutely.
Uh, RFP for painting of long-term care facility kitchen.
I move to approve the updated RFP for painting of long-term care facility kitchen as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services. And authorize the posting and distribution.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
My only discussion is here's another, another RFP that we're approving to go as an RFP, but we didn't approve.
Well, the reason we're doing this one is because.
It was a change.
Because there's a change and you had some concern, so.
Right.
And it was, it was just being uh considered of us. I don't think it technically needs to be, but I think Jason was trying to give deference to the forge.
I, I read it, it looks good.
Mr. We go to? Yes. Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's Office, line item transfer.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Well, that got me and seconded, any discussion?
I had. Sorry, I just need to. So. Um, how much, oh, I just had a question, how much are we under for deputy's salary expense in?
Yep, so um, I don't know if you received all three pages of the request, I put an analysis on the back. Even after the um transfer, there would still be about uh just under two hundred and twenty-two thousand in that um full-time deputy line. So we're just looking to move over, um, because we had so many vacancies earlier this year, full timers, we're utilizing our part-time staff. Um, which is a separate line, so that's, it's just kind of a wash, removing one to the other, just for filling in for those positions.
And obviously that's the, even with, cause you're, we're at full staff or deputies right now, right?
At the moment, yep.
So this um adjusted year and anticipating to balance it. Takes into consideration full staff at the end of the year, I presume. Agreed. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard? Yes. Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. There we go, we're on to the final case, I'm gonna let um Pat Conway, question on the phone? All right, I'm gonna let Jason Smith go first.
Good morning again. Um, let's see, uh, we remain moderate, so that allows um residents to um. Take their masks off when they're in um group activities, dining and throughout the community. Um, same thing with staff members who are not in uh resident populated areas, but when providing care, they still need to wear their mask. They'll need cases, of course, so that's always a good thing in assisted living or in the nursing home. Um, as Commissioner Coyle mentioned, we are in our survey window, um, we are doing our best we can, as you know, um, our. Um, ADON is um on a leave, so we're really trying hard to um focus on um supporting operations. Um, and we have Michelle and other uh nursing leadership that's really focusing um on that. We have Jessica Window who is attending um a program uh for the past couple of days uh on public relations um and. Uh, as a public relations officer, informations officer, excuse me. And so she'll be wrapping that up, it is just a really intense uh program and she'll be certified um uh under FEMA, so that will be good. Um, we're coming along with our assisted living renovations in the gathering room. Um, I provided a timeline in my board report for you, uh, so a lot of detail and very excited that that will be wrapping up in early May. And we'll take some pictures or have a little uh gathering for everyone to uh come and see the new space. Also, I provided a copy update for the quarter, so you can see where we are on our projected uh performance improvement projects uh throughout the community. Also, I provided you with our compliance program dashboard uh for FSA uh on our government standards with um compliance initiatives. Uh, we're meeting all requirements um as the dashboard uh indicates. Um, thank you.
Good. Um, for the record, Kathy Stacy has joined us, our registry deeds, and uh then I'm gonna go to Pat Conway. Because I know sometimes she's gonna leave early, so Pat?
Everybody. Um, so we're super busy here with the next, this week and next week, we have uh nine jury trials going on here that. Um, my folks are prosecuting along with me, I have a trial next week. Um, so we're really, really busy, um, we're continuing to train our three new attorneys and um, we also have. A few new legal assistants that we're working on training. And um, so we're, we're moving along, things are crazy busy, but it's all good, um. I'm sure you heard in the news about the Portsmouth. Issue at all the Portsmouth schools, just took a call from Portsmouth PD about that and that investigation and um assisting with that, so super busy. But all good, so um, that's all I have to report, thanks.
Great, thanks, Kat. Uh, where is Kathy Stacy now? Hi, Kat.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, not too much to report, uh, we're still working on back projects, it's still relatively quiet here. I have spent quite a bit of time speaking with um some of the senators on the finance committee is uh along with David. Ross, um, with regards to nursing home uh funding and I've been speaking about. Uh, the retirement issues, cause there's about thirty-one retirement bills. And uh, yesterday I testified with regards to the probate bill, again, I think it's, we killed it, I'm pretty sure it's. It's dead on arrival, which is a good thing. And um, yeah, and so other than that, uh, things are going well, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Kathy. Uh, Catherine Mann in the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, um, yep, we're uh kind of business as usual over here, we're um pretty busy right now with a lot of grant-related items. Um, oh, we'll be putting a memo before the board probably next week. Uh, the Port Authority Grant is uh open again and we're um putting Emily to the task, uh, our new grant writer, uh, to try and uh work on that with us. Uh, if you remember um, last time we had attempted for a uh mobile command vehicle, uh, so we're gonna. Try and make an attempt at that again, um, there is a match component uh that'll be involved and um, we still have some of that ARPA money set aside. Um, but we'll get that request before you next week. Um, other than that, just kind of business as usual.
Very good, thank you, Catherine. Has everybody had a chance to meet anyone else, by the way? Okay. All right, um, maybe we'll bring her down next week. Let's go to, we're gonna to Jude.
Good morning, um, Allswell in Engineering and Maintenance, we have something going on all over the place, we're very busy, Allswell.
Okay.
Delegation room, sorry, I shouldn't, I should point that out, Michael Evans and his crew have been working diligently on the roof.
Oh, yes.
And they're doing a beautiful job, it's weather tight already, they started the shingles today. We took the shingles down the road, we had them recycled and at ERCO, so I was pretty happy about that, they took them, so rather than pitching them, we had them recycled. It's a, it's a good project, with two layers of shingles on it, it was definitely needy. I've got um somebody coming up to assess the chimney tomorrow because there was some, chimney, once we get out there, gotta go.
The sheathing, okay?
Yeah, a couple, just a couple of soft spots that we replaced. Yeah.
Did they strip four layers?
They did. Yeah, that's a lot of work. Yeah, yeah. They did great and not a complaint, I mean, that's one of the really remarkable things about Mr. Evans is he'll do anything and he's happy to do it and. Whatever you need, he's just got a wonderful attitude, so it's good, yeah, thank you.
Jason Henry?
Yeah, well, with the roof, uh, Mr. Evans has been busy, um, he's always funny, he updates me, it's like. He always comes in, hey boss, there was two layers of shingles, all right. And, and he made concerted effort to make sure that every day the, the site was cleaned up, so you couldn't tell there was a mess there. It wasn't just left and use leaf blowers to blow everything out of the bushes and everything else, it sends me pictures on, on a daily basis of the projects, he does a really good job. We're very lucky to have him at the J Lane on complex, so. Um, yesterday I was in Concord testifying to the feminine hygiene bill, as I, if I'm a hygiene czar, I guess. Um. That went okay, um, Senator Carlson wants to talk to me some more about ways that it can. Help fix the bill, um, cause they keep trying to combine too many things with the state and counties, it just don't work and other things, so I will be doing more work with that.
Kind of a caution, you said?
Yeah. It was an interesting day. Uh, the, our Apex Virtual Reality um trainer that we have, that we got two of them is, the April eleventh last week, we had training. We had two of the trainers from the Sheriff's Department come down and several of our staff members and we understand it went very, very well, the Sheriff's. Um, Department guys are very excited about this, um, there is. So many pre-programmed stuff in there that it's just, we're just hitting the tip of the iceberg to start with, so we'll be. Learning more and more how to use it and then eventually the game plan will be to um. Have the commissioners go through and maybe public go through as well as we come down the road and you guys be able to do scenarios and all that kind of, if you choose to.
Well, that's.
Um, so it's, it's a very um. Interactive and a great piece of uh technology and equipment, uh, when we actually, when we're more comfortable too, I probably will invite the media over to take a look at it as well, we're the only ones in New England.
I was just gonna say, we're the first in the counties?
Yeah, oh yeah, another county's having, we're the first in the England even have it, so that's why we also got it at uh half the cost for two.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so we'll be doing some media stuff on it, but there's a lot of interest in it, so it.
Nice.
It was very exciting, staff was very excited. Yesterday, summer staff went up to the state prison and trained with them on their um response teams. Um, that went very well, um, but they'll come down here at our jail some point, use one of our empty units to also cross-train with them, which, which is great. The things are opening up to be able to train back and forth. Uh, like uh the nursing home, we also lifted the mask mandate, uh, staff was, thought it was a joke, so we actually went down and showed them we have masks on the side of the building, they really believed us. They did, um, again, like anything else, if there's an outbreak, we will have to go back to some things, we have protocols in place, for now, staff's very happy, um, they named H two. Right now I have Lieutenant Conroy and Purple Maybe are both in Rhode Island now, uh, attending the gangs class, which is great for update of uh. All the gang stuff and they help teach the academy as well too. Matter of fact, the academy's got one nineteenth academy is going on right now, uh, graduation is on the twenty-eighth. Uh, we are gearing up for um, the first week of May is Corrections Employees Appreciation Week. So we started to use some of our funds that we have over there to really, really beef up that week for, for the correctional, about all employees. On May sixth, which overlaps with that week, starts the um nursing appreciation week, so we're gonna try to work some with prime care. With them to have a crossover kind of day to work with them back and forth as well, uh, so we've been doing a lot of work on that. Last thing is the twenty-first uh is Association of Counties meeting, I asked Chuck to be my proxy. Cause as of the twentieth in the afternoon, after probably do Zoom meeting with the commissioners, I'm flying out. To Ireland, today we go on the rest of that week and whole following week. So.
And Guinness and uh Jameson tours?
Got those tours, got tour of the jail over there, uh, did you start in the old jail and finish the new jail, that kind of stuff, there's some more, all kinds of stuff, so we're.
Just for, just for the record, this is your, your personal vacation?
Yeah, my personal vacation, um, yes.
Not a county thing?
No.
Your wife is very tolerant. Jail tours on your.
She set it up. I think she's hoping to keep you. Yeah, exactly. Some major ban will be here, you know, if needed, and again, I, I'll phone if we needed to, if anybody needs anything, so.
Uh, we'll try not to bother you.
Appreciate it, so. Thank you.
Very good, Allison?
Um, it's just been super busy um over at our office, just kind of tying in loose ends for the budget and other things. The only thing I have is we have our new, on April eighteenth. We are going to, uh, the clinicians, the onsite clinicians uh will be on site. Um, we're excited to have them on board, um, Tuesday, they'll have office hours from eight-thirty to five and on Friday from eight to three. Um, we did send out an email notification and then we're gonna do a mass mailing um to everybody's home, so that they have an understanding. Of what that's about, we're happy to partner. That's Health Watch EAP, Tracy Hutch and Penny Remick. Um, and they're very excited to be coming on board as far as offering, you know, contracted services for our staff that may just wanna. Seek services about any number of things, um, it's totally confidential, it has nothing to do with the county other than us providing space. And for us providing um direct dollar services to those two providers for their time on staff here, so we're very happy to have them coming on board, so thank you.
I just wanna add that, and again, thank the commissioners for a- allowing this to happen, I do have staff members that have our expressed interest in that service. I also like to, you know, reach out to Robin and her team, cause I know that in next year's budget, they put in for everybody to have emails. Cause it's been very difficult in communication when HR puts things out, email, I can only email to the, the shift supervisors and I can only hope that they make it to them.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so this is gonna be huge come next year, um, because the mass. You know, sending to home is because we don't know everybody's emails, so if we get back to their emails, we would put it out and then put read receipts, that kind of stuff, so this is gonna be. A, a huge, I think, boost to the county on just communication purposes come, when that happens.
Very good.
Just another example.
No, that's it, it's been too busy, yeah.
Doc? Um, obviously.
Obviously, busy budgets, grants, all the quarterly reporting cycles now, so whether it's Sheriff's Office stuff for JAG or ARPA, big reporting due at the end of the, the month. ERP reporting is due on Monday. Let's see, the closeout report for DOC RSAT grant, that's a simple one. You know, obviously the rental system, ARPA ones are much more involved for that reporting, obviously all the different grant administration. Emily will little by little get around to everyone as their schedules permit. I'll, I'll make a note to. But she's doing well, she is digging in and doing the research and very involved. I believe she got over to to be able to speak with Kathy Stacy and see what kind of grants might be available, you know, beyond a Muspli one. As far as for helping out with any sort of records projects. One thing that did come up that Kate Borgan emailed around is, is one of the effects of the ending of the National Public Health Emergency is there's some effects on how we can use ARPA funds. Now, most of our projects, not affected. Unfortunately, one that is, is on the employee premium pay piece. And so that'll have to be a point of further discussion as far as
Yeah.
that you can only get premium pay up through performance date of like April tenth, anything after that date has to stop, so we might have to do something with what was originally gonna be scheduled for July, instead to do it before that and to have it be only really for services performed, because all county employees are deemed to be essential employees under all government employees, that are essential employees under, under this act. But we can only say that covers for, you know, those like, I would say like active employees that did services up from one-on-one this year to like April tenth or April eighth, April eighth is the end of the world. But that's, that's one unfortunate thing that, that happened with this change. Anything that's category one, which is public health, no problems. Category two, negative economic impact, that's the one we're doing all of our different assistance for nonprofits, for local businesses and hospitality industry, and also the, the subwards, no problem, employee retention type stuff. Or some of the incentives, no problem, because that's negative economic impact threat of get people to stay or attract or even rehire. So that's, those incentives are okay, that's a different expenditure category from the premium pay, which is expenditure category four. So that's the one, infrastructure not affected, obviously lost revenue, projects not affected, it's really this overall expenditure category four for premium pay that was impacted as far as for the projects we have. So that's, that'll be a future consideration.
Chuck, is, is, can we use the money that is allocated for employee retention and put it towards premium pay, that and the different as a different category instead of, you know, because since we won't have the funding for premium pay, maybe we can use it as employee retention money?
That's where you're, well, it's, it's a little trickier. I mean, we can see if on a technicality.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss.
Can, but I know that the, the referral and the hiring incentives are okay, because that is under one of the things of the negative economic impact pieces, it's it's a little bit more fine-tuned that has to go on, because like, if, if it's individuals are truly performing direct open response type stuff, that is easier to, you can rationalize that. Much easier, because some of that does fall under this expenditure category two for negative economic impacts. Premium pay was nice, it was more broadly across the board, ones that qualified for it, so it's
We had to run reports and justify it.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, the other option is to move up the timing and scheduling of what would have been that last installment to do it more like now and say that it's for current active people that perform services, and then new county year up through like April eighth.
How many people are on that? How many employees?
Well, we had, is probably somewhere around, if I had to guess, like order fifty, including per diem that qualified, I believe.
Yeah.
So basically, full, if eligible for correctional officer, a position else for all monitoring care, they got one set amount. Those that were in other positions that were full-time got a separate amount, lesser amount. Because they weren't as impacted by COVID.
Yeah, we triaged it each of the three years.
And then all non-CEO, non-LT positions that were part-time or per diem got lesser amounts that were berated. Based upon either scheduled hours worked, or in the case per diem, actual hours worked, so that's how we had done it.
So if we don't supplement it with something that pay just gets reduced to the normal pay, is that?
Oh, well, luckily we've done it differently, so unlike maybe some other counties, we didn't put the premium paid supporting hourly wages. We actually did just semi-annual, for the most part, semi-annual payments.
Flat rates.
So we had to do the calculation, make sure it didn't push anyone's average hourly rate for the year over the thirteen dollars per hour that you're allowed under the employee premium pay.
So, I mean, we're not in a, we're gonna be in a fine position, but
Those others that actually funded.
For years to come. I mean, especially now, right at budget season, they must be.
Our, our problem.
You know what, it's like an example, like of our thought, you know, and credit to Allison and Chuck and permission, everyone just doing things strategically in a way that doesn't, you know.
That's why we're number one.
Well, we knew that the proverbial bill was gonna come due at some point, so that's why we didn't use it to actually fund employees. It's really, really busy. Busy, that's, that's all. I mean, FEMA is still working on our twenty-twenty-one labor one, because it's easily over half a million dollars, and they ask for, they're like reviewing time cards, individual time cards. Sounds like it'll take a while, so that'll probably become twenty-twenty-four fiscal year revenue, because in FEMA, you don't accrue it, you just record it as revenue in the year that you get it, because of how long FEMA can take. So that's why we saw like fifteen thousand budget for FEMA for next year, but the actual amount might come in quite a bit.
Right.
So.
Very good. All right, Leila, do you have anything you wanna share? Nothing we should be looking out for?
True, so the commissioners proposed budgets, it's nailed out.
Oh, scheduling, yeah, scheduling.
Right, and so final changes will be on the twentieth, April twentieth.
So I'm hoping for, this is my hopeful timeline, is that on April twentieth, any final changes of the commissioner's budget can hopefully be finalized, so next Thursday. The ultimate deadline date, I would see for the mailing out, would hopefully be just the Monday or Tuesday the following week, but maybe as early as Friday or later Thursday. So. So that's what I'm hoping for, one thing that Cheryl Hurley's been asking about, because she's trying to get her schedule out to the delegation members.
Right.
Because they have the subcommittee, executive committee and delegation meetings, the schedule is that they would like to know, at least to put on their calendar, to know when the commissioners will be having their public hearing on, on your proposed budget, and target date I thought would be Thursday, May fourth, because there is a DOC meeting day.
Right. So Leila did send out an email to the commissioners, I responded back, but I thought it should be at, at a time that allows people that work a normal shift to be able to be able to, you know, get to the meeting if they should, so choose, so not in the morning. I, I said anytime after five-thirty, I believe. You, did you, you chimed in?
I think I said, yeah, I said six, but I mean, I, I'm in that same vein, anywhere five to six, I was suggesting that we have our commissioners meeting at three PM, if it's on that day, and we do the OPA debatement commit, keep the OPA debatement committee meeting at one. Do the commissioners meeting at three, that would give time if we wanna do the public hearing around five-thirty or six.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that?
Is that okay with you?
May fourth.
I like the timing fine, I gotta check the date.
It, does that work for department heads too, because it makes it for a bit of a later meeting on that date? I am cognizant of people who wanna go home and have damn other family considerations.
I do have a conflict on that date.
What time?
Six-thirty, I have a six-thirty meeting scheduled.
Could we? What'd you say? Could we do?
We do. Well, I don't know.
How long, where's your, do you have, what time do you have to move here to make your six-thirty meeting?
Five-thirty.
I don't think you'll be that long with the
Does anybody ever come to these meetings?
You might, there might be a couple representatives that might, city of Porchester used to back when Bo Angel was manager. I don't think we've seen them since. It's usually fairly fast.
Potentially, if we schedule it five, we're probably gonna be out by between five-thirty and five-forty-five, it might hold you a little tight, but you could do it, and then
Do that.
we could roll back the, we could keep the one o'clock opioid debate committee meeting, and then maybe roll back the commissioners meeting to two-thirty on that day.
Yeah.
Because that gives us two and a half hours and people would be ready.
Sounds good to me.
And, and I'll let Cheryl Hurley know, this generally speaking, the, their draft budget cycle or budget meeting cycle is very similar to last year's, you just have to like back things up by like a, a day as far as you're looking at last year's, and obviously once Cheryl shares the schedule or finalizes it, I'll share it as well to Commissioner's Office and departments.
Does that usually start off after the, this May timeframe?
Yeah, so, so basically, May, they're, the first big date on the, on the delegation side will be May fifth. Because that's gonna be the third quarter budget review. So that'll be like nine-thirty in the morning, as part of that meeting, I mean, they've got seven new members, the executive committee, so they'll probably talk about yeah, subcommittee meetings, that will then be kicking off or be going on the next two full weeks, Mondays and Fridays, because they're in session for Tuesday, Wednesday. And then, well, scheduled right now is May twenty-sixth will be the subcommittee reports or subcommittee proposed budgets, I'll be another executive committee meeting, May twenty-sixth.
We'll worry about that.
May twenty-sixth.
Yeah, so again, most of the dates are same as like last year, but you just have to back it up by days, so last year is May twenty-seventh, this time it's May twenty-sixth. There'll be, the estimate right now is a June seventh public hearing that the executive committee will do on their proposed budget. And then two weeks after that, on Wednesday, the twenty-first for June would be the scheduled date for the delegation meeting.
Okay.
Very good, so that's the, and twenty-third is a rain date. Yeah, no more snow dates. So seventh is the, is, is public hearings slash executive committee hearing as far as on their proposed budget.
Alright, very good, so did I get, did I get?
Chuck, I think it's incredibly helpful.
Alright, so we're all set with department head updates, thank you everybody, we're on to new business. What should we go do, just get some new business?
I would like to propose that we add ten thousand dollars to the county specials budget line to support their organization gathers. They submitted all of the paperwork, very complete style. These people offer a unique service because they're bringing food to people as opposed to having it at some church basement or school that, you know, where people have to go to it, I think it fills a niche, and I think it's an organization that we ought to support.
I wholeheartedly agree, ten times over.
So, alright, so would you, so this is gonna go into the into the budget, into the budget, you don't want to do it into the ARPA money?
No, this is part of non-county specials.
Right, you'd rather, you'd rather have the taxpayers pay for it. Versus the ARPA money that we already have.
We already, I think it's we don't want us to plant, and I think that this is part of non-county specials for, in the same way, and we, I think where we are with our budget, we can absorb that, and it becomes, rather than a one-time pay out to ARPA, it becomes part of the non-county specials, so especially where we're dealing with inflationary costs and food insecurity, in the same way, you know, sort of meals on wheels.
The county can afford this, I think its backfathers would support it, and I'd like to see it on an ongoing basis. There aren't a lot of organizations that I want to, but when these people are delivering food, and they're delivering quality food, you know, like they've gone to dairy farms, and they, you know, they milk and eggs and stuff that you don't get at a lot of the other, you know, food kitchens, because they just have non-perishable items in it. It's just, I, I think it's an organization that needs to be supported.
And to your point, from what you're telling, they do work with local farms, so it's like they're coming full circle, and we helped, we really did a monumental effort to help the dairy farms, and my understanding is those dairy farms are the same ones that
It's happened, but
So we're like, we're, it's kind of nice that we keep the, you know, keep the cycle going.
But the funds that we helped, those paid through ARPA.
Yes, but what we're saying is, right, we did, there's time to help, we use ARPA for this, but what, what I'm saying, what I think we're I do say, and what I'm saying is that we get it into as part of an ongoing vegetarian considering.
I understand that motion, yeah, yeah. So motions have been made, second on, on the motion, Commissioner Goode.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I would vote no, and my explanation's gonna be is we have a ton of ARPA money, we could be awarding them the same amount of money through the ARPA money, instead of putting it into the, the budget, but good cause, I have no problem with that, I just think it should be used a lot, but two to one on that, so you can, you can add that to the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Goode.
Any other new business?
Just a point of clarification, I, for, when we had our budget session on non-county specials, I know that I found out what had happened as far as Isaiah fifty-eight, and so something happened with, with the Adobe version that the person I had assigned to, to insert numbers on, that when she looked at their response, it was all blank, for Isaiah fifty-eight, except for the center age. So it's like all the fill-in form piece wasn't there, but the page that was scanned, because it had a center on, was there, so when I asked him to print it PDF, all of a sudden she saw the numbers, so thank you for allowing me to correct the part proposed budget. Now, I know that that one we brought back to being level funding, were we bringing any others back to levels funding, because there were two others I'd asked, or three others I'd asked for increases, but I didn't, I only recollected that it was Isaiah fifty-eight that was gonna be put back to level of funding.
I could take a look at that.
Okay, because Haven asked for a little bit more, not a lot more, but some. Meals and Wheels asked for a little bit more, but I think the question was, is that all that they would need? And then I think another one asked for like a thousand dollars more. I think one of the transportation ones.
Yeah.
I would like to, well, I, I'm happy with leaving the rest of the budget on that as it is. I, I would like to see the paperwork on Isaiah fifty-eight.
Okay.
With all the details up there, they, I assume they've given us financial records and how much money they have.
It was, it was complete. It was all there.
Yeah.
It was strange, because my laptop here during our session, I was able to see the details, so I don't know what was up with that.
You can just, it's like you can, oh really?
Well, I, 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 I've got like six accounts, and I get them confused, and I'm, I'm just so maybe I need one more attempt at it.
She showed me. We're going into non-public? Thank you. Okay. Hey, everybody, we're gonna be going into non-public, so, so, thank you everybody for hopefully everybody has a good day.
Oh, would you, do you wanna ask for?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm gonna ask for public comment, I don't, not see anybody, but I need to ask for it, so thank you. Anybody from the public? Okay.
I want to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety on a call in three, section two personnel matter, and for the first non-public, I will invite Allison and Jason.
Thank you.
Okay. On the motion, we're going to non-public, I need a second. Seconded. Seconded.
Yes.
I vote yes. So we're going to take a minute break. That's okay.
So we've just come out of non-public and I move to seal the non-public minutes indefinitely because it's determined that the purportions of this information would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member in this board.
Second motion been made and seconded to seal the non-public minutes indefinitely. On that motion, Commissioner Foyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard, yes, and I vote yes.
I'm sorry, I have one question. On those non-union and union, should it be any, should there be a hold on the hire date? Do you know what I mean? Like anybody? We're going to pay it back to the
We can take it back. This is
So what are you saying?
Why don't you guys?
I was going to say the, we said, April eighth is that of a work week.
Offline. Like you guys can figure this.
And we can tell you and that would be okay.
Back into the higher day. So I was thinking.
I move to adjourn.